Judy, I don't want to start till you're ready, so you give me a thumbs up, okay? When you're ready to go. Thank you. Okay, I think we are about ready to get started. Thank you for your patience. We had another meeting upstairs prior to this one, so we were running a few minutes late. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order for April 6, 2021. The first thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Who is the... Oh, that would be Councilmember Anderson leading us.
Thank you. Would you all join me in the pledge? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. And if I could invite, oh, Pastor Thor, if I could invite Pastor Thor Strandhold of the Valor Christian Center down to provide our invocation for this evening.
Well, good evening, everybody. All these happy smiles here this evening. You know, before I retired here to Arizona in 2013, I was a physician in California for 40 years, taking care of people's physical problems. And while I was in practice, I also became an ordained minister. And I thought, well, it's time for me to retire, time to hang up my hands and just take it easy for a while. Well, when I got to Arizona, got everything put away, hung the clothes in the closets, put the pictures on the wall, and I sat there and I said, now what do I do? Retiring is hard. It's not an easy thing to do. Remember that when you get there. And I felt the Lord speak to my heart in a very special way. He said, you're not going to retire. You're going to refire. And so for the last six years, I've been the associate pastor at Valor Christian Center. It's been a wonderful job, a great opportunity to meet all of you in the community and to be a part of what's going on. So Mayor Peterson and Vice Mayor Prokowski, I got it right this time, and thank you for having me, and Town Council. There's a man in the Bible by the name of Solomon, and in his day, King Solomon was considered the richest, most wisest man of his time. Now, he wrote the book of Ecclesiastes, he wrote the Song of Solomon, but he also wrote the book of Proverbs. And the book of Proverbs is considered the wise, the book of wisdom in the Bible. I just want to do a couple of scriptures here for you tonight. Proverbs, Chapter 1, and I'm going to start with verse 2 this time. "To know wisdom and instruction, to perceive the words of understanding, to receive instruction of wisdom, justice, judgment, and equity; to give subtly to the simple and to the young man knowledge and discretion." Now, here's the verse that really counts. "A wise man will hear an increase in knowledge, and a man of understanding shall attain unto wise counsels." And it's my personal opinion that the purpose of our town council is to bring wisdom from each one of our members, to make decisions concerning the benefits for our community. And I believe this is a community that has made great strides, and because of those decisions that our town council has made, we're continuing to move onward and upward. Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, I come to you tonight, and I ask your blessing upon our town council. I ask your blessing upon this meeting. And I thank you, Lord. You give all of those that have to make the decisions wisdom, Father, beyond their years in making the right decisions for our community. And Lord, we'll be careful to give you all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory for it. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Thor. Learned something new about you this evening, that you're a physician in your previous life. Thank you for always being here when we need you to provide an invocation for us. If I could, please, ask the town clerk to conduct a roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yentz.
Here.
Aquorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. Next, we have presentation of any recognitions, presentations, and proclamations, and I believe I will start with Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. As I had mentioned last week, when I gave a report on the activities going on at Amoah and the importance of water planning in the state, it's turned out to be a very convenient moment at that time because we were honoring those who not only are involved in doing the great planning work for water management in our state, but also those who are participating in conserving water in Gilbert. So tonight, we have a couple of proclamations. One is, the first is the Gilbert Water Professionals Appreciation Week, and just a few highlights from the proclamation. Whereas Gilbert's professionals, stewards of the water profession, have dedicated their work of public service during an ever-changing pandemic and are essential workers, performing valuable public safety service. And whereas Gilbert has a diversity of water resources, groundwater preserved in vast underground aquifers, runoff from mountain rainfall and snowmelt collected in reservoirs, Colorado river water moved through hundreds of miles of canals to Gilbert, and recycled wastewater treated to drinking water standards. And whereas Gilbert has been a leader in sustainable management of groundwater resources and has pioneered innovations such as water recharge and expanding the reuse of treated wastewater to replenish aquifers and improve local water supply reliability. And Gilbert, and this is very important, and Gilbert has become a 100% water reuse community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gilbert Town Council hereby declares April 5th through the 11th, 2021 Gilbert Water Professionals Appreciation Week, and extends its sincere gratitude and appreciation to the water professionals who are on the front line of the delivery of Gilbert's safe and reliable water. And I know that Jessica Marlowe is with us virtually, I think. Is that right, Jessica? Is Eric online too?
Yes.
Is Eric online? Is Eric Brown online? Eric, are you there too? Well, let me just say to both of you that congratulations. As I mentioned last week, I'm amazed at how well the Southwest manages water and how we plan for the use of water. And it's because of professionals like you, and Eric, I see you now. It's professionals like you that are able to achieve the goals that we have, 100% reuse of our water and managing our water supply for our growth in the town. So thank you and congratulations. And we recognize you for this week, April 5th through the 11th, for all your work, hard work and your success. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate the kind words and support.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to just take one minute and thank the mayor and council for issuing this proclamation and recognizing the hard work of all of the staff. That, you know, when many of us went to work remotely over a year ago, they kept reporting to our facility every day. You can't run a water plant or clean a sewer line or fix a main break from your house. And it's their dedication to the town and to their professions that kept the clean water flowing in and the dirty water flowing out to every home, every business, every hospital in the community over this past year. And the reclaimed, as you mentioned, our reuse, they kept the lakes full, and we were able to enjoy our parks probably a lot more than we had in the past over the last year as well. So just really, really appreciate their dedication to the town, and we value their commitment so much. So thank you.
Thank you. And it's coincidence, I guess, that you'd mentioned that the residents are the ones that help us achieve those great accomplishments that we're able to do in the town. And that has, that leads into the second proclamation, which is to Waterwise Gilbert 2020 honorees. We do this each year. We recognize those associations, neighborhoods, and businesses that contribute to our Waterwise policy, our ability to recycle 100% of our water resources and in our conservation efforts. So this is, this proclamation recognizes those groups which by, I think there were 123 different businesses, organizations, and facilities that are now able to contribute to the Waterwise program. Whereas water is the most precious natural resource within the desert, and whereas Gilbert's Office of Water Resources and Conservation has implemented many water efficiency programs that aid the residents, businesses, and other organizations in Gilbert with the conservation of water. Now, therefore, the Gilbert Town Council does declare the following businesses, organizations, and facilities to have attained Waterwise Gilbert status for 2020, noting the additional honors to those who have met this designation continuously and expresses its gratitude and appreciation for their contribution to a sustainable and exceptional quality of life. Again, as I mentioned, there are 123 different organizations, businesses, facilities that contribute to this program. Some for as long as six years in a row, we recognize them, three years in a row, and some that are new, and the list keeps getting longer and longer. And we really appreciate our residents who are involved in this program and help us in our Waterwise conservation efforts. So thank you very much for your efforts.
I want to put in a special plug for Eric Brown. We had to have a quick meeting a couple of weeks ago that our town manager pulled together, and Eric was on vacation and joined us virtually from vacation in the middle of the day. So they really are, they go above and beyond in everything that they do every day as Town of Gilbert members. I will take the next proclamation. If I could ask Katie Thomas to come down and join me, please. I met Katie through Gilbert Leadership a few years ago. And this proclamation this evening is for the Week of the Young Child. I'll read a few of the items that are listed on the proclamation. Whereas all young children deserve quality earning, early learning environments that support them as capable and competent lifelong learners. Whereas investments in babies and young children have profound impacts on creating a strong and vibrant community. And whereas First Things First Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children and Other Community Organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Week of the Young Child. And whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in the Town of Gilbert. Whereas early childhood educators and others who make a difference in the lives of young children deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to the future of Arizona's young children, families, and communities. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Bridget Peterson, do proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2021, as the Week of the Young Child in the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, and encourage all citizens to support and invest in early childhood education in our community. Katie, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and esteemed council. We appreciate your vision and passion and dedication to Gilbert's youngest children. I'm Katie Thomas. I'm a wife, a mom of two kids, and a Gilbert resident. And I'm proud and honored to serve as Regional Partnership Council member for the First Things First Southeast Maricopa Region. Isn't that a mouthful? The cool thing about First Things First is that it was actually created by Arizonans instead of by legislature, and it was designed to help more kids arrive at kindergarten ready to succeed. As Arizona's early childhood agency, First Things First is the only state funding source dedicated exclusively to the beginning of the education continuum and partners with communities to support parents in their role as their child's first teacher. It should also be noted that economic development starts with early childhood development. Evidence shows that quality early learning programs result in short and long-term economic benefits, not only to individuals and families, but communities as well. Once again, we're excited as First Things First to partner with the Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children to join the nationwide celebration on a Week of the Young Child. As you mentioned, this year marks the 50th anniversary, and we are so excited for it. Young children are our future, and there are many ways that Gilbert community members can come together for children and celebrate this Week of the Young Child. Please take some time to support early literacy initiatives. Thank teachers who educate and nurture our children and work towards public policies that benefit all young children.
Thanks, Katie. I think it's important to recognize all different aspects of our community, and I appreciate that you have taken this on as something that you're passionate about and brought it to our attention. Thank you, everyone. We will now move into the consent agenda, oh, excuse me, Communications from Citizens. And Vice Mayor, if you would like to take that, please.
Certainly, Mayor. We have three requests to speak tonight. The Communications from Citizens portion of the agenda provides our citizens an opportunity to identify for the town matters of interest or concern that are not on the printed agenda. Under the provisions of open meeting law, we are prohibited from responding to the issues that have not been noticed. Therefore, we may only listen. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented on, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. When I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and place of residence. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks or threats are inappropriate. And at the discretion of the mayor, the speaker's time may be ended at the podium. Each speaker will get two minutes. Our first speaker will be Nolan Baldwin.
Push. There we go. Now it's working. I was going to let you have a night off, and as I sat down, someone asked if I was going to say anything. I thought I wasn't, but I want to say thank you. Greg Davis and I and Randy Adams met with Jason and Mr. Snow and another guy, I believe it was Martin with Intellis Group. And so they are looking at changes, and, you know, they've been instructed to find options. So that means that they've been talked to. We appreciate that. We're going to keep working with them and do our best to get things how we would like them, and hopefully it'll be where both of us are happy there. So thank you for that. Jason did say, we asked him to, you know, get a letter saying something to the appraisals and other people that, you know, everything said to acquire your property. We said, please get that off of there. And we got a letter from Jason yesterday, I believe it was, or an email from Jason. He has done that. So appreciate your work. I know all of you have been out to see the project, and I've seen you all out there, except for the mayor, but thank you for making this happen. So we appreciate it. And we're going to keep working forward with him and the rest of the group to see if we can be happy with what happens. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Debbie Kuhn.
Hi, I'm also here trying to stop what we call the land grab. I appreciated Pastor Thor's prayer, that you have a prayer here to make a good peaceful setting here. And I would just like to add that we pray for honesty, virtue, integrity, and transparency, along with the wisdom beyond our years, because we all need that. I'm the one who mentioned about the signs I noticed, and kind of confusing because I went back today to get a picture because I had a bad picture. You couldn't read it, and they're gone. And it was a trail sign stating of the new, of some upcoming transportation system. And it didn't show horses on it. It showed runners and I think bikes, if I can remember right, but I'm positive I saw the headlights of a vehicle. And I was like, what? What's the vehicle going to do? And so I kind of liked somebody to contact me and explain to me what kind of transportation is being planned to go through the Eastern Western Canal onto Free Stone Park, onto Greenfield, because those are where I saw the signs. And I drove to those areas today, and there's no sign of them now. And I'm just, okay, what's, why did they put them up? They took them down. Also, the pointed signs that are telling us about a canal there, then we're trying to get to the traffic light to push it for our horses, those are still there. They're still dangerous. So Nolan just answered my question on having appraisers come and ask us for, you know, to be able to praise our property. I appreciate it. You give us some time and please reconsider taking our land. My horses need every blade of grass and every foot to play on, as it keeps them calm if they get to play before we go out to ride. There's not enough room for a round pen, and there's no place for us to exercise them. And so if we don't have a place for them to play, they are very rambunctious to try to get on. And my daughter, who you met last week, who has, she's just the little one, and who spoke, she needs that for her therapy. And I would, me, we don't want to come off our horses, and we really rely on that. And a gait to bring in the feed. Also, we are so willing to let them back in there to take care of whatever it is they need to take care of. It's going to be much more affordable to us, to all of us. They're not counting foot, feet, they're saying 23 feet, but if I have 150, 165 feet across, that's, let's talk about per square footage of grazing property, of running property, of property for someone to play catch or run, you know, and just to have games and exercise.
Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate your comments. Our next speaker will be Julia McCleve.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Julia McCleve. I live at 436 North Honeys Huckle Lane, right down the road from Debbie Kuhn and the other 24 people. My remarks are really pretty quick. I know that you want it. There's no question. I've found out how much you want it, but I don't think you need it. And that's my crutch right there. Until you can prove to me that you really need it, that you're not planning for something in the 22nd century, that's ludicrous. So I really would hope that you would sit back and think about what you need versus what you want. Thank you very much.
That concludes our Communications from Citizens. We'll move to the Consent Calendar. We had no items requested to be pulled from the agenda. So may I have a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 4, 5, 5A, 5B, 5C, 6, 6A, 6B, 7, 7A, 8, and 9.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. The motion passes unanimously. That concludes the Consent Calendar. Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We don't have any items on our public hearing agenda this evening. Administrative items, moving to boards, commissions, and committees, any reports from council liaisons, anything you'd like to share. Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a redevelopment commission meeting this past month, and was very excited to see the new brand red building plans being submitted. And so if you're not familiar with that, that's between where Norwood Furniture is and Farmhouse Restaurant. And it will be quite a multi-use facility, and it will kind of stair-step back, but will have a rooftop lounge. And so you'll be able to see the water tower right from there, and it's really a nice project. So that's moving through the process. It wasn't just a study session. And so they got a lot of comments from that. And the other thing I wanted to report was on Gilbert Sister Cities. Unfortunately, in Antrim, Naby, they are just looking at reopening their schools right now. And so they believe that they may be having school all the way into the summer. So we're really disappointed that our students that were going to go last summer, we pushed off trying to have them go this summer, and they're not going to be able to go. So that's sad news. But the good news is that we're going to be providing each of them a scholarship, and they'll be able to use it towards their college education. And we will be working with staff here and over there and trying to potentially do a virtual ceremony just honoring the students here and there and presenting that scholarship. So just wanted to bring you up to date. We're really sad that that didn't work out. And unfortunately, the age of the kids, when they're first selected, they're between their junior and senior year, which now puts them in their senior year. And obviously, they're ready to move on to college or their other adventures. So we'll look forward to maybe having a really nice celebration for them anyway. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Tilke. Any other comments? No? On to communications then. Report from the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just one announcement tonight. A retirement of a longtime Gilbert employee, Dan Areola, who is also a proud Army veteran. Served the Town of Gilbert for over 20 years. Started his journey with the town on September 18, 2000, working in environmental services, hand tossing bulk trash piles into the rear of a truck. Dan Sue moved to Commercial Collections where he learned to operate a front loader and a roll-off truck. He was transferred to our Public Works Streets Division where he worked with our fog and crack seal team. Dan realized his heart was in solid waste. He returned to Environmental Services to work in residential collections where he continued his career driving a side-loading truck, emptying black and blue pins for our residents. In his seven years as a residential solid waste operator, he collected over 1.6 million cans, 21,000 tons of waste and recyclables, and drove over 130,000 miles. So we thank him for his service to this community and wish him all the best in well-earned retirement.
Wow, the stats that you can pull out on solid waste when you, it's amazing. Thank you. Any report from council on current events? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Today is my husband's 40th birthday. So I just wanted to give a big shout out to Keith Kaprowski for his 40th birthday and a thank you to all of our families for supporting us in this leadership role even on these late nights.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Happy birthday. Any other comments from council members? Next from me, and I don't have any. I think I shared a lot last week. And we met one week ago. So I have no other items to report. And I will go ahead and recess this meeting so that we can move into an executive session upstairs. Thank you.